How is everyone?
Good for Monday.
Yeah, as good as can be for a month.
Also, go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is 6:00 P. M. If we can start with our pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the following, which stands one nation, under God, in the name of this law, with liberty and justice for all.
Thirty third, may I give you a paper of course, please?
Councilmember Williams, Gordon, Reid, Jackson.
Here.
Lawler, Davis, Brad, Stewart, and Mary Fender.
Here. So our first item for our study session is to review the water and sewer fund budget. So I will turn this over to Director Clark.
Thank you, here. Thank you, Council. In front of you, we'll turn the sewer funds on five ninety. Set on tonight, sewer fund and water fund, crucially, it's on five ninety, sewer fund. The report that you're looking at, first column is the 2021 activity. Second column is 2022 activity. Third column is the 2022 budget and path. The fourth column with activity thirty one of twenty three. And fourth column, it is projected activity twenty three. And the last column, like, coming from the requested budget. So as we start, if you look at the revenues, 2022 budget was only one, I mean, fifty five million. As we look at the numbers, we, services with twenty thousand, this budget, I believe, only going to take in forty five hundred. Products for services rendered, I didn't budget anything for that, but we are going to take in five thousand nine twelve. Chargers for our services for sewer fund, I budgeted for one million seven sixty seven thousand five hundred. I believe we're going to come in at one million eight sixty four, one million eight hundred sixty four thousand, which is up, so that's ten. The late fees on the buildings themselves, if they pay, I anticipate a budget for twenty five thousand. I believe we're going to come in about fifty four thousand, a lot of that to come in over the first, the second month of twenty twenty four, or we can do that at the end of here. And so the total revenues that I believe are going to come in are one thousand nine thirty four, four sixty, or one million nine hundred thirty one thousand four sixty two, which is over one hundred and sixteen thousand. Next year, I anticipate two million two hundred thousand total. Just to remind ourselves that we have increased the base certain kind of transfer, you're going to twenty two, and then I'll go through twenty twenty four. That's really helped out sewer fund. The expenses, which are department five thirty six, total budget. Last year, it took me twenty three, it was one hundred and seventy three thousand on ten. I believe you're going to come in at one million five hundred thirty one thousand three fourteen, that's a saving of about two hundred and thirty thousand. Some of the numbers that I highlighted that makes that change, if you want to go back to the first page. Account seven seven six, right down, because we go to the bottom of the page, five hundred, five thirty six, seven, second six, materials supplies. I budgeted for thirty thousand. We're just going to come over a little bit over ten thousand, so that is lower. The chemicals I budgeted at fifty thousand, they're going to come in about seventy seven thousand eight hundred, so that's up. Account seven, or excuse me, account seventy one, which is the maintenance of the pump equipment, that I did for twenty thousand, that's going to come in about twelve thousand, so that's down, we'll do a little bit. The professional fees in the contracted services, where we're most of what I budgeted for, the professional fees were basically zero. And the contracted services, I budgeted for one hundred and fifty, they're going to come in about fifty five thousand, from account eight oh one and eight oh two. The storage treatment, which is eight oh eight, I believe, fifty thousand, it's going to come in about thirty thousand seven hundred, so that's lower. And then the equipment room, which is account nine forty three, I budgeted for six thousand. And it's going to come in about twenty four thousand. All of that is, I think, is twenty seven, thirty three, twenty eight. And again, they're going to come in about one hundred and five thirty one three ninety two, that's a savings of about two hundred and thirty thousand. Next year, I budgeted for one thousand, excuse me, one thousand five seventy three eight sixty five, which is up about forty three thousand. Something new this year that wasn't there in the past, we had the big sewer wastewater project, the total cost of that project is eighteen million eight oh two, eight oh four, our participation in that project is eight hundred two million, or eight hundred two thousand, eight oh four. The rest is going to be covered by bonds that we sold. So our participation of eight hundred two thousand, eight oh four, we already paid that, that was nine thirty to twenty three. I did receive my blank draw, but expenses over that amount that we get paid for, and the first draw, we made four hundred and seventy one thousand, eight hundred eighty five dollars, and I received that on eleven two. So as we spend money for this project, we'll get reimbursed one hundred percent. And the total project, once done, will be set up and depreciated over forty years. The expenses will never hit, our people statement, or our spend statement, they never hit, it's going to be depreciated over forty years. And then you'll see that I also, probably the interest on the bonds, is account five ninety, nine oh five, nine ninety five. Twenty three entries is going to be sixty one thousand one seventy two, and point point four of interest, it's going to be two hundred and thirty one thousand, so it's going to be one.
So Director Clark, kind of going back to the professional services. So we had budgeted a hundred and sixty, do we know why we had such a high number for that line item of what we were anticipating and didn't happen?
Yeah, when I budgeted that, I actually made a mistake when I budgeted that, that should have not been there because any expenses that we spent on this project will be depreciated, the balance sheet is working process until the project is complete. So that was basically a mistake on my part.
So professional services, that's that.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. Anything that's still in the project, you start to finish, it's got a lot of, it's been distributed over forty years, once the project's done, so it shouldn't make you have to go reach for their information. So transfers out for twenty twenty three, there's a footnote down there, they pulled one hundred fifty three thousand five five seven. For twenty twenty four, they're only going to be one hundred sixteen thousand two hundred, they won't just get paid off. So well transferred below. But they're, they're going to explain the results as the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. So as a total for the fund, on page three three, I budgeted for a loss of one hundred eleven thousand one twenty nine. I think we're going to come in at one hundred and seventy five thousand nine twenty dollars to the positive. And for next year, I budgeted a total surplus of two hundred and seventy thousand three oh four. So basically, the thirteen point nine percent increase from year to year has really helped this fund. This is an enterprise fund, so it should be standing on its own, which has taken enough revenues to, to sustain taking expenses and also to gain a sustainable inside improvements. The total debt of the eighteen million, we show on the balance sheet, it is an enterprise fund. But the debt, we show on the balance sheet, the payments will be due to the debt, and the only thing going forward that will get the balance sheet for the appropriations, for the appropriations. Even interest on the loans.
Where is that on this?
Project.
Where is that on this document? Where is that debt service on this document?
It's on the balance sheet. This is just the revenue.
We have a three-page document, it's not in this document, correct? Okay, I was searching these numbers, you were calling out, and I'm like, I have no idea where they are.
Yeah, so total project, that'll cost eight million eight oh four, it can set up on the balance sheet, depreciate over time, forty years, and we will not reap appreciation. But the interest will hit the appropriations, take that every year, based on the interest we pay on the bonds, the whole bond for eighteen now.
So that's, that's five ninety triple zero six six five, okay.
Bonds were signed on nine twenty nine of two thousand twenty three, so we do have to include a little over three months, excuse me, yeah, three months of interest for twenty twenty three. And that full year of interest was three point four. And the bonds that stood up in three separate bonds, one is eight million dollars, the other one is for eight point eight five four million. And the last one, it's going to be one point one four six million, those total eighteen million. The other two bonds are at one point two five percent, and the last one for one point four five six million is at two point one two five percent. That last one, we had to pick and every end cover the total project.
So then that number for interest, you've got requesting five thousand dollars.
It's expense.
This is estimated revenues.
Interest expense is shown in page two or three.
Right.
So, pretty long point three, it's one thousand seventeen.
He's talking, he's referencing, um, the interest under the revenues, that's different interest from what he was.
Yep, yep, debt service bond section, thank you. Nine oh five and triple zero.
So going forward, as long as we can collect our sewer fee, this is one hundred and seventy nine. There are three parts that are set on the side, I hope it's a cat, it's something wrong, and for a few of the sound of the beginning, as part of the regulation, but that will all show on the balance sheet.
And one thing to note for the sewer funds, so council passed a resolution in twenty nineteen to do an increase for the next five years, I think it was a little over thirteen percent, so next year will be the final year of that increase for the sewer, for sewer rates. And that has been built into this budget as well, and will be reflected in the twenty twenty four fee schedule.
Excuse me, city manager, how do, how do we plan on proceeding after that, when we have increases?
We will, so it's my recommendation to revisit this each year and do whether we're doing a rate study to determine what that needs to be. But to keep us from being in the situation that we were in prior to this last round of increases, I think it's smart to do small incremental increases each year, so then when we get to a point where we have to do improvements, we're not doing such a drastic increase in putting that, that burden into, or onto our residents and users.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that was sewer fund. Any water funds, on five ninety one, twenty twenty three budget. I budgeted for one million six hundred and sixty seven thousand oh seventy one. As we look at the numbers, the first thing I want to point out is account five forty, which is the state grants. And this is a, most of that project being completed in twenty twenty three, but this is going to be completed in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. So if you look at the projected twenty twenty three activity, number of a hundred thousand five eighty two that I project, that's part of that four oh one oh seventy four. The rest of it will come in in twenty twenty four, and that's the three hundred thousand four nine two, and requested budget number for five forty. Those two together will equal four oh one oh seventy four. And while we're on that subject, if you can go down to the bottom of the page, and account five thirty six P. O. one. That project, that's total score and one thousand two seventy four, if it's going to be covered one hundred percent by grants. We've actually received a hundred thousand five eighty two, which is shown on top, and inside that number on account eight oh one, of one oh two oh sixty eight, is a hundred thousand five eighty two that we spent for that project. And then, and the next number beside it equals exactly what the grant is on the top, so there's no other loss from that particular project, it's funded one hundred percent. And then it's the, he goes, grant for replacement of the water lines throughout the city. Total project plus is on four thousand oh seventy one, it's a hundred percent final, but it will stretch out over two years. Some of the other numbers I want to point out, is account six three three for charges, I budgeted one million two hundred thousand, that is way low. Should have budgeted higher than that, the actual amount, I think, is going to come in at one, one million seven hundred seventy five thousand. Just to remind everybody that we did increase our water rates for twenty twenty three by fifty percent, or more. So that's why that number's a lot higher, and then for twenty twenty four, I just probably still get the five, eight, one, eight, one. Our interest will be sixty five, I don't think, we can tell, maybe seventy five and thirty two thousand, and next year, anticipate thirty nine thousand five hundred. Other revenues, better than twenty five, we're actually going to receive about forty thousand five hundred, and next year, I budgeted for forty thousand. So my total revenues, I budgeted for one point six six seven million, and I think we're going to come in about one point nine nine seven million, which is three hundred thousand five. And next year, with thirteen, or with the increase in the grants, overall revenue will be two million two fifty three nine hundred ninety two. We go twenty five thirty six, we do the operations, the water system. Full budget. I'm going to zero in on that number, eight oh two. I'll count eight oh two on the first stage, with five hundred point one thousand four thousand four. That really should have been a hundred and twenty thousand, because the rest of it is going to come in next year. So my numbers that I'm going to look at, postage, tools and equipment, which are, is still on the first page, account seven forty six. I go into fifteen thousand, I think we're going to come in at three thousand eight hundred, so that is lower. Materials and supplies, which is account seven seven six, I budgeted for thirty five thousand, we're going to comment about eleven thousand, so that's lower. Chemicals, seven seven seven, I'm seven seven seven, I budgeted thirty five thousand, but then you buy higher, hundred and seventeen thousand, so that's up. And also maintenance of pump equipment, I'd go in for seven five thousand, and it's, it's actually coming about twelve thousand, so that's down. Distribution of maintenance supply, which is account seven eighty three, I budgeted for sixty thousand, maybe fifty one in the lower, and at thirty six thousand seven hundred. Then of course, the grants, like, it's playing, that's account eight oh one. And then contracted services, I budgeted for a hundred and twenty thousand, once I back out of four oh one oh seventy four, and that's going to come in above the default balance, so that's all. So I budgeted for one million eight fifty nine, excuse me, back in my goal, one point seven four, I budgeted for one million four fifty eight two sixty five. We actually put in that one million four fifty seven nine thirty two. So I talked about three hundred bucks, not bad. Better than loans, which is department nine oh six, that could play off in twenty twenty three, so there would be no interest in things on the board. Transfers out, which is department nine sixty five, in twenty twenty three, nine thousand one thirty five, this transfer to cover the energy, the energy bond payment. Five ninety two to cover the garage payment, and two hundred and sixty six, eighteen forty, to help with that North Alvin Street Bridge, and even motorcar decks. One twenty four, the only transfer I have to make, that's budgeted in seven thousand eight fifty to cover the energy bond payment. So we look at the total fund, I budgeted to lose four hundred and seventy thousand two eighty seven. I think we're going to come in, positive at two sixty one, three fifty three, and next year, I anticipate positive five sixty one, nine fifty. Five hundred and sixty one thousand nine fifty. So the water funds were a lot better.
So there's not a scheduled increase for twenty twenty four for the water fund, since we did do the drastic increase this year, however, with the upcoming water system improvement project, a piece of that is we hired Baker Tilly, they're a financial advisor company, so a part of that project, they will be doing a rate analysis study to determine where our rates need to be, to make sure that we're able to cover the bond payments and the maintenance and improvements for our water department and things like that moving forward, so there will, probably will be a proposed increase to that, but similar, as stated with the sewer fund, I think it's the best practice to do small incremental increases each year, so then we're not, get to a point where our enterprise funds, they're operating at a deficit, and then we have to do such a large increase and put that burden on our residents and users.
But I do mind, you know, pulling that sewer and water fund can stand on their own, as long as something major doesn't happen. And that's the limitation.
Yeah.
And I believe, is maybe going to get the presentation on the water system.
Not, not tonight, no.
But we do have a water system improvement project that I think we discussed briefly on, the total project is nineteen thousand, excuse me, nineteen hundred and two hundred thousand. We do have the grants for head other, if you can understand, and you do have a participation loan that we can use for five hundred and thirty three thousand. But it's, we don't have to come up with about nine point one million, and I think we'll, if we sell bonds, we're trying to get some type of loans for that. And then we, we were anticipating maybe adding on some of the, but it's too early to budget for that, because I'm not quite sure how we're going to take care of that. So I'm really not known until we figure that out, but just like a wastewater project, the water system improvements will always set up on the balance sheet, it'll be appreciated over forty years, it's depreciation. You know, anything that will really fit, your corporations will be depreciation and interest on it, all of that.
Do we have any questions? For Director Clark, or City Manager Slater, and our budget items that we just reviewed?
One thing, I just want to know, both of our water and sewer funds, they are looking well, and I think we're getting them to a point where they can stand alone, but I also want to keep in mind, we have a lot of infrastructure work or improvements that need to be made, so we're, we're putting ourselves in a good position to be able to cover those costs or tackle those projects.
Do, do you know where we need to be at? Excuse me, in order, in, in terms of reserves, to, like, do we have a certain reserve amount where we'll be okay with the, with the infrastructure, you know, anticipating the future years and all of that?
It's hard to say with the level of improvements that we need to do, but when we move forward with the water improvement project, a part of that, it was selling bonds, like, we're required to create a capital reserve fund to put something in each year, because they would like to see that we're, we're setting ourselves up for success, to be able to cover any future maintenance costs. So we'll set that up for the wastewater as well as the water improvement project, but I think until we can tackle a good amount of improvement projects, it, it's kind of hard to
say right now.
Hard to say what that, yeah, what that amount would need to be.
I got you, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, well, thank you, Director Clark, for your information for us.
Just one other thing on the budget, so those were the final two funds that we needed to present to you all, I know the EDC will be scheduling a special meeting to approve their budget. We will publish the formal public hearing notice in this week's paper to advertise for the public hearing on the proposed twenty twenty four budget, that will be held at our November twentieth meeting. So we'll hold the final formal public hearing, and then we will bring it to you for adoption at the first December meeting, so we are on track to meet that, to meet that goal.
All right, to our regular council agenda items for discussion. The first item that we are going to be asked to review is our resolution for the CBDG grant that we also had a public hearing for. After our public hearing, we're going to be asked to approve the resolution. Do we have any questions or comments on that? Next, we're going to be asked to approve to retain conflict counsel.
That's something I'll discuss in a closed session, because we could probably skip that one.
All right. Next, we have some board applications that need to be approved. I wonder comments on those. Then we're going to be asked to have the, for the second reading, ordinance twenty twenty three oh six, to amend our black party section. Questions on that before we?
If we can, did we get any feedback from any residents from, after our first reading?
My office, we're Stevenon. Hi, Officer Steven on.
Okay.
I had a maybe one reach out with just a question of what was in there.
Okay.
And I just forwarded them um, the agenda from the meeting when we spoke about it.
So just a reminder, this this ordinance will take effect December sixth, and so. Um. And maybe the city manager can correct, as part of our budget adoption, the first meeting in December, I believe we also do our annual. Um, schedule of fees, and so maybe then maybe next um, the next meeting this month might be a good opportunity for council to discuss. Setting the the application fee for block parties.
Uh, what day did you say, uh, the government? Six, okay.
Next, we're going to be asked to approve resolution twenty three twenty six. Uh, to approve the community foundation agreement with the Albion Arts Commission. You have questions on that? Next is our resolution twenty three twenty seven. Intent in declaring reimbursement for the drinking water revolving loan on. Questions on that before we approve?
Um.
I can give a quick overview of the.
Yeah, could you please?
Yeah, um, so this is a formal resolution prepared by our bond council for um, the water system improvement project, so we did receive formal. Um, notification from Eagle that this city has been granted nine point six million in grant dollars. Oh, a little over half a million in a loan um, from Eagle for this project, so we will be responsible to cover the remaining nine point one million dollars, so. This resolution just. Says that we are, um, we anticipate advertising to sell bonds, um, probably in December um, to. Cover the um, design engineering, right of way permitting, legal um, fiscal and administrative costs to get this project up. And running, so to cover all of that, we're looking at one point, um, one fat, one million three hundred and three thousand dollars. However, in the resolution, you'll see that we are, we listed three million, um, when talking with bond council, you always, you go a little higher than you. You anticipate, you think you're going to cover just in case unnecessary unknown. Costs come in, or if they're higher than what you anticipate, because once we publish this, we can't go back and request. Request more, so we will be publishing um, for three million, but um, the total cost, we're looking at a um, one point three million, so this just allows us to. Sell those bonds to kick off this, to kick off this project.
Any other questions on that? Next, we are going to be asked to approve resolution twenty three twenty nine, to appoint Councilwoman Davis. As our representative to the Council County Transportation Authority.
I don't know, because I'm going to do.
So as we've been talking about over the past year, um, we're getting to that point where now we need to do a lot of quick. Uh, work with getting this off the ground, so. Um, their meetings are going to be during the day, we're going to need somebody to be a representative for the community. Uh, so Councilwoman Davis has graciously accepted uh, that responsibility to go to those meetings regularly. Um, and then provide feedback to us. Councilwoman Lawler.
Yes, thank you. I have nothing against it, but I just wanted to know, um, was anybody else fixed?
No, I figured that since most of those meetings were going to be during the day, uh, the most of us. Um, work, so it would be a challenge. To get to those meetings, because they're both to be involved, of course. So.
This one.
As I re, as I recall, you did bring it to the council and asked us if we wanted to, so.
So she didn't, so you did. I just.
Can you elaborate a little bit more on, not my own? But I remember there was some causes, the cost for the union, if everybody was together by a foot and a bit on that, so if you could please.
So there's no cost tied to this, so the county commissioners, they will be voting at their meeting on Thursday to establish and um, appoint the members to the TAC. So we um, as a jurisdiction, jurisdiction that is participating in this, we are allowed one seat on the board. Um, so they ask that we provide our um. Board board appointment so that they can formally approve it on during their Thursday meeting.
So are you talking about the cost for some of the overall thing, the offshore?
Oh, yeah, so we, as a city, we've had the opportunity, we can either participate in the transportation authority, or you can opt out. If you choose to opt out, then our city um, will be excluded for the, from, from the boundaries of. Um, the service area that this transportation authority will will service, so we chose to participate because we know we need public transportation here in our community. Um, and and with that, that's what the TAC will establish, so this. Authority will be funded by a millage, so they will determine what that millage amount will need to be, it'll go to the voters. For them to vote on, so I don't know what that will, what that is right now, um, that's what this lovely board will get to, get to decide for everybody who participates.
So at that, at that point where it does. Go to the communities that are opting in, and only those communities would vote on the village.
Correct.
Yeah, and my understanding is that a representative from each entity will then bring information back to the council. Or their, you know, public facility or office uh, to share and to get feedback, so I'm not be out there by myself, you know, so. Get feedback from the council in terms of our preference, our decisions, and things like that.
Councilwoman Lawler.
Thank you so much, um.
Will you be attending this meeting, City Manager? Or just the TAC meeting, so no, I will not be, because I'm not a part of it, I do have a meeting with the county administrator tomorrow morning to get an update on the process, so I can. Report back, but all of the board appointments will go before the county commission on Thursday, I believe it is, the eighth.
Next, we're going to be asked to approve the Whitman proposal for our water system improvement project.
City Manager, if I can give us a little bit of the phone in. Yeah, so um, a few meetings ago, I believe it was our first one in October, Mickey Bittner with Lightman Associates came and. Um, spoke on the water system improvement projects, he did provide a proposal for Lightman Associates to assist us with that. You can recall that initial proposal was only two hundred, was for two hundred thousand dollars, that allowed him and his team to get started. On this project, because we are under a very tight deadline, and that's um, Eagles timeline that we have to meet. So included in your packet is a proposal to cover the remaining costs for them to assist us with this project. This will all be covered when we go to sell bonds to, to pay for this.
We have not counted the keywords.
Yes.
Questions or comments on the Whitman approval? Next, we are going to be asked to approve of the Graham Luke Miller proposal for the EDC investigation. In your package, you have. Information that they have provided us, with their qualifications.
Yeah, um, so e- everyone's got the proposals on their packet, um, there's, there's two things, I mean, I guess what I would say is. A- as an initial matter, I mean, Grand Lucow is a, is a pretty well-known firm in the state of Michigan, they've got offices across the state. Um, so I mean, they're, they're certainly reputable, and they're, they're more than um, qualified, but there's two things, um. Number one, on their um, project cost, they've got it listed as not exceeding twenty thousand dollars, which is double. What the city authorized, so. Um, I guess what I, what, you know, I, I would say that they're the only firm that bid. Um. If you look at in in their project, or in their proposal, rather, um, the the partner would be billing two hundred and twenty five dollars an hour. Um, at ten thousand dollars, that's forty four hours of work, which I think is a lot. Um, and so. You know, their proposal contemplates eighty eight hours, which I think is. Ridiculous, so. Uh, you know, council can can do one of, well, and there's one other issue in that their proposal was lacking the affidavit. That we required as part of the RFP, um, so council can do one of two things, um. You can opt to approve uh, the proposal contingent on the number one. Providing that affidavit that they're required to do as part of the proposal, and number two, that the services are capped at ten thousand dollars, I mean, I guess hypothetically, you could. You know, raise that, but I mean, I think you went into it in a closed bidding process, and you set the parameters, and. You know, my, my inclination would be to to recommend that you stick with that. Alternatively, if you're not happy with this proposal, you can go back out and as, you know, to to steal a phrase from Councilman Williams. Pass the wider net and put it out maybe for a little bit longer, and maybe try to post it in some other places and see. You can gather some other proposals, but if you're going to move forward with Grand Lucow, and like I said, they're a fine firm, but. Number one, they're double the budget, and number two, they didn't provide that affidavit, so if you approve them, I would make the approval contingent on them. Doing those two things.
Yeah, 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 when I read this, that was my basic concern, I didn't know about the affidavit, because of course, that's legal. Uh, uh, requirements, of course, but uh, if it doubled our budget. Um. That's, that's concerning.
So what, I mean, is it a possibility when we get to this point that we? Ask them to agree to those terms before we?
Well, so what I would say is, y- you know, if if the other parameters of of their proposal are appealing to council, I mean, they're the only proposal you've got. But you, what you can say is, well, we'll accept you as the. Contractor on this, contingent on, number one, you agree that the fees are capped at ten thousand, and number two, you provide that affidavit that. Was lacking from the proposal, if they decide we're not agreeing to that, that's fine, then the, there's no contract, you guys go back out and pass the wider net and try to. You know, get some more proposals. I mean, it, like I said, I think forty four hours, you know, if you, two, two, ten thousand dollars over two twenty five an hour is forty four hours worth of work, that is a lot of time. I mean, that's, you know. It's a week. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a lot of time, and and so eighty eight hours is. In two weeks. So, I mean, and that, and that would assume. You know, eight hour days, so that's just my two cents, I mean, I, if you're going to approve it, I would make a contingent on those two things. If they decide they're not willing to accept those terms, then, I mean, the city's not, hasn't lost anything but some time. And then I, you know, you just put out the same bid and. And see if we can find some other places to try to attract some other firms to bid on it.
In your professional opinion, do you think the job can be done in forty four hours?
Well, I. You know, based on the parameters that we gave them, I think it could. Um, I I I just don't see a firm devoting an entire week of eight hours a day. To nothing but this, or at least one partner, develop, devoting it to nothing but this, that just in my mind seems like a lot. So. And I think eighty eight hours is, I can't even wrap my head around that.
Well, it says it here, like, so the partner fee is one amount, but then the associate's needs another amount, so. It's like they're going to have more than one person working on this at a time, and so you're going to be billed. Basically, those two different.
It's, they're two slightly different rates, and they hypothetically could overlap, but either way, you're talking about the same number of hours roughly that would fit into the ten thousand dollars. You might get fifty hours at an associate fee. But it's still going to be over the partner. To, you know, put the final report together and all that, so.
Right, do we have any other questions or comments in regards to? That item? Next, we are going to be bringing up, like, giving students absences for Councilwoman Lawler and Councilwoman Reed. At uh, past meetings. We're going to be asked to approve of the twenty four council, council meeting dates.
And one thing to note on that, so the two dates for January, they have been pushed back to the second and fourth Monday of the month, just due to how the holidays fall. So that's the only change, every other meeting will be the first and third Mondays of the month. Just wanted to point that out there.
Any issues on those dates being pushed back? And then we're going to be asked to approve of the intro vocal of Green. We have questions on that item?
Um, yeah.
Yep. Question, yeah?
Yep, uh, Colin. Uh, are we all in alignment on this at this point on the inter?
Yeah, this was the uh, version that the EDC attorney and I landed on, and so my understanding is their board voted on this at the end of August.
Okay. Sounds good.
Any other questions or comments? All right, public comment. At this time, if there's anybody within the gallery that would like to stand and address council, you may do so, just give us your name and address. Three minutes will be given to you.
This power, I think, I think you had someone.
Yeah. Okay, my name is Margaret Powell, precinct two, one sixteen West Pine Street, Albion. And uh, I was looking on here and. I didn't understand the. About the approval of this uh, second reading and adoption orders. Twenty twenty three oh six. And to amend chapter seventy four, street sidewalks. And other public places by adding article three. Block party section seventy four through seventy through seventy four through seventy nine. And I was just wondering if that, since it says streets, does that mean that they're going to be? Um, doing something to the streets in Albion?
So unfortunately, this is not a, a back and forth conversation, unfortunately, so you're able to, you know, come up and give your comments.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, and then, of course, we will cover this at the regular session.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Karen Fox, I live at nine oh one Irwin. Just to comment, I know the city has ordinances, last year I had a citation because I had a sign too close to the road. What bothers me is. There's a house on South Eaton Street, which. Walnut Street dead ends tube, that's been propped up with two by fours on the porch for ages. We have cars all over lawns and what have you, and why would a citation for. Political sign be such a um, infringement on policy?
And any other public comments? Not seeing any, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So mobile.
All right. Study, I'll give her say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Study session, return six forty eight P M. We'll be back at seven P M for our regular segment.